Okay. At 7:00 PM on February 12, 2024, I call the meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Do you want to read the opening?
Sure.
The reminder?
So this is just a reminder that this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting in Meeting Room 1 at Town Hall, online through Zoom, or also through its live on Area 58.
Thank you very much. So we are going to start with the recognition of the South Shore League Fall All-Stars.
Yeah, so we're excited to do a couple of recognitions this evening. The first one we'd like to do is actually a carryover from our last meeting, in which we recognized all of our Fall All-Stars from the fall season. But several of our players actually had games that evening for their winter sport that they were participating in. So we wanted to give them the opportunity to come this evening and just recognize them for their outstanding seasons that they had in the fall. We all know that being an All-Star in a sport is more than just what you actually do on the field or on the court. It's about a lot of things. It's about your effort, it's about your attitude, it's about your intensity, it's about your leadership on your team, it's about being a hard worker. And I think our Fall Athletes exhibited all of these things. And for these things, they were recognized by the league for their outstanding performance, but also for being outstanding leaders. And we'd like to take a minute or two this evening to recognize those we were unable to do at our last meeting. So first, for field hockey, Alexandria Perry. Hi. It's our commitment. Yes. We'll call him right up together, and we'll do a picture again. For volleyball, Julia Grimes. That's our Julia. So I say the name on, so people hear me say the name. For volleyball, Maeve Zacharuski. For soccer, Sarah Stares. I don't know if Sarah came in. And for cheer, Elena Thomas. So, okay, if I just go into our next recognition?
Absolutely.
Sure. So for our second recognition tonight, we want to recognize our two Project 351 ambassadors, Charlie Donovan and Jesse Badger. So Charlie and Jesse, if you can come on up, that'd be great. So I'll tell you a little bit about Project 351. It's an independent nonprofit organization that builds a movement of youth-led service by allowing each of Massachusetts' 351 cities and towns to select one Project 351 ambassador each year, based on their demonstrations of leadership, service, and commitment to their local community. The ambassadors are united for a year of leadership and service to transform their communities, elevate kindness, advance social justice, and gain courage, compassion, and show the capability to lead change in their own communities. So Charlie was nominated by the middle high school teachers, guidance counselors, and administrators to represent Carver last year, so we thought maybe we'd do a little transition this evening. So Charlie's going to talk a little bit about his experience and the things that he's led within Carver as a Project 351 ambassador from last year. And then we're excited to announce our Project 351 ambassador for this year, Jesse Badger. And Jesse's going to share a little bit, he just went to the kickoff for this year, which always happens on Mount Luther King Day weekend, so Jesse's going to share a little bit of his experiences on the kickoff. So Charlie, why don't you go first and talk about your experiences as our Project 351 ambassador and the projects you've led within the community?
Thank you, Mr. Neef. Over the last year, I was Carver's Project 351 ambassador, and through Project 351, I was able to lead three service projects at the middle high school. The first one was a clothing drive to Cradles to Crans in April, which we donated, I think, 25 trash bags full of clothes.
Nice.
To people in need.
You applaud for that, that's pretty exciting.
In September, they have this 9/11 tribute service, so we honored the veterans and remembered the people that died and served in 9/11. And just in December, we did a food drive for Shane Good Thanks Food Pantry, where we raised some food for the food pantry.
Awesome.
Thank you, Charlie.
That's great.
And Jesse, I don't know if I'll talk a little bit about your experience as our new Project 351 ambassador and the launch day and what happens there.
So, in the morning, we just had breakfast on the bus. It was nice. They started the kickoff by the governor speaking to us, just giving us a little bit of inspiration to go through the day. Then we went to our service sites, and at my service site, we made meals for people in need. We came back to the JFK Library, and they talked to us, shared how many lives we impacted. I think the overall number was 72,000 lives impacted that day.
Wow.
So it was a pretty good experience to...
And when we talked earlier, you said you knew that, you had an estimate of how many meals you made that day with your group?
Yeah, we made about 2,000 meals that day.
Wow.
Yeah. So it feels really good to be able to help people in need and who are hungry. After that, we just had a party, and then we left.
And just, you're still thinking about what you want your focus to be, because each Project 351 ambassador kind of picks a focus for the year. So you're still working on identifying your focus?
Yeah.
But we're excited to have you represent us and to be our Project 351 ambassador. Charlie, thank you for all that you've done. And really, both of you have demonstrated the qualities here of leadership, service, and commitment to local community, and we want to thank you for that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's great to hear about students performing service. I just lost my background agenda, I apologize. It just disappeared. That's what happens when you hit the wrong button. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the EAPC. Thank you, Kelly. I think I saw Tammy is here on Zoom. Hello.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. That was awesome. It was good to hear from all the students tonight that were being recognized. I just wanted to say a couple of things that are happening around the district. So Scott presented the FY '25 school budget at our last faculty meetings. We appreciate the transparency behind the challenges our district faces. However, any cuts to our staff, even one, is one too many, and it is not in the best interest for our students. We, our members in the negotiating team, are in the process of preparing to meet with a school committee in order to discuss how we can preserve our current staff positions, positions that are all critical in providing the needed services our students deserve. As we brace ourselves for the winter storm predicted to arrive tomorrow, we are also bracing ourselves for the challenges that lie ahead in regards to our school budget. We have many dedicated professionals that care deeply about all the students within our district, and I know that together, we will create solutions that are in the best interest for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the student ambassadors.
All right, this evening, we're excited to have Owen Kegel, Josephine Vroom, and Sarah Prescott with us as our student ambassadors from Carver Elementary School. Can you just give me a second to bring up the presentation?
Absolutely. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Right?
Just give me one second, almost there.
All right. Hi, I'm Owen Kegel.
I'm Sarah Prescott.
I'm Joey Vroom. And we are student ambassadors from Carver Elementary School, and we want to share some of the great activities happening at our school.
Globaling is an event that happens at night with a lot of neon lights in the dark. It is extremely fun to go to. I recommend going.
There were two separate nights for kindergarten and first grade.
It's fun to see kids enjoy themselves.
The kids get to be more social, and the parents get to be social, too.
There was glow-in-the-dark face painting and good music such as Taylor Swift and the song "This..."
"This girl is on fire."
There were a bunch of cute dogs at Reader Dogs. I thought it was great for kids to get stuff off their mind and read to the dogs.
It was amazing to see how focused the students were while reading.
We were all able to observe the students in third grade, bring their books, and read to the dogs while the dogs listened and enjoyed the stories and attention they got.
The students enjoyed the experience. Students had to be calm around the dogs, have them sit for a pad, and the dogs lay down while the kids read.
I love the French bulldog named Dolly.
Aww.
Same.
Same. But of course, we love Venzi.
The bottle projects are for third graders to learn about people in history.
There are people who have made a positive impact on the world.
The bottle projects are displayed in the third grade hallway. Kids worked really hard to make the bottles look like famous people in history. I did Roald Dahl as a bottle project.
I did Albert Einstein, and my brother did Leonardo da Vinci.
Everyone was so creative.
First graders on Groundhog Day watched a show about shadows, then were able to make their own shadow puppets during class.
I remember when I was little and I watched the show.
The Groundhog wasn't the only one who saw his shadow. Classes celebrated 100 days of school in all different ways. In Miss Dracchio's class, we did 100 days of school, 100 cubic units.
I did it, too, and I made an airplane.
Some third grade classes celebrated 100 acts of kindness.
Only 80 more days to go. My brother performed the recorder. It was amazing. He also earned his black belt for playing "Ode to Joy," yeah, I said that right, by Beethoven. That was pretty cool. He was trying so hard at home. The pasta was straight from Mamma Mia's and based off of Italy with the Italian flags and the teachers serving food. There were brownies and treats and even hot cocoa.
Last year, when I won, it was so much fun.
Oh, sorry. We have binding rehearsals after school. We even had one today. I peached the starfish.
I'm Scuttle, who is a really funny character and usually autistic.
I'm Marlin. Look at that handsome fish on the left with the big conch. He looks really talented and honestly, a little attractive.
I'm a starfish who is caring. So in one of the scenes, you'll see something that happens that'll be a little bit emotional. I'm in a tiny tank.
I'm excited for this show, and we have lots of fun at rehearsals. One of our songs is...
Go with the flow. Go with the flow. Go with the flow, don't be a high-strung fellow. Kick back and keep it mellow. Whoa, 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 go with the flow.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. We had snow much fun.
Wait, did you say snow?
Why, yes, I think you did.
Sorry, I got a little carried away. I sure do love a snow day. Anyways, have a great evening.
And remember, above all, be kind.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing all the wonderful things happening at the elementary school with us. We always look forward to having our student ambassadors come. It's always so memorable. Thank you, thank you. No worries. Do we have captains counsel?
We do.
Yes, okay, great.
So Julia and Jane are ready to come up and sing.
Excellent. It's our pleasure.
Julia and Jane are like, "Kelly, why do we have to follow them?"
They did better than us.
So we're happy to have Julia and Jane as our, Julia Grimes, Jaden Sotomayor, as our captains of the girls' basketball team.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. I'm Julia Grimes.
And I'm Jaden Sotomayor.
And we are the captains of the girls' basketball team, and we just wanted to come up here and talk about the current status of the winter sports at our high school.
The girls' basketball team is currently 11-7, and they're ranked 16th in the Divisional Four State Finals. We also play St. John Paul tomorrow, and we will be having a Crusaders versus Cancer fundraiser, which we will be having raffles for. Our senior night is this Friday against Hull, and the boys' basketball team is 11-6 and are also ranked 24th. And they play Westport on Wednesday and Hull on Friday, which are going to be both the way.
Track and field had their sectional meet, and a bunch of athletes placed. Cam Elaine and Luke Holden both finished first. Sarah Lantry, Corinne Clarity, girls' 4x2 and 4x4, along with the boys' 4x8, placed second. Maya Sepulveda and Carly Peterson took third. And Elaine Holden-Peterson all set school records in high jump, long jump, and the 600 meters.
Our wrestling team has had their D3 sectional championship on Saturday, and they finished eighth out of 15 teams. Mikey Brennan and Aaron Reed both won their sectional championships, while Jack Reed and Colson Tully both finished second. And they all advanced to state this weekend.
Next with hockey, the girls' co-op hockey with Sandwich is currently ranked 14th in the Division Two, and Maddie Butler was just featured in the Boston Herald article in yesterday's paper. And the boys' co-op hockey team with Middleborough is 9-6 and ranked 28th in D3, and only the top 32 teams make the playoffs.
With gymnastics, they've competed at the Cranberry League Championship, and Jessica Baldwin was named All-Star, and she's finished ninth overall.
And lastly, we just want to say that the spring sports registration is now open for signups.
Great.
Got a lot of great stuff going on this weekend.
Yeah.
Julia, Jane, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for being here. So many great, right? So many great things. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. And since we are on Zoom, I just want everyone on Zoom to know that if you would like to speak during public comment, you are more than welcome to. You just need to please, is the chat open, actually?
It is, the chat is open.
Okay. If you could please just type your name in the chat if you're on Zoom and would like to be recognized to speak, so we can call on you. And if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, if you could please just come up to the table.
Hi, I'm Maeve Zacharuski, and this is Julia Fernandez. And I just wanted to talk about the budget cuts for teachers and the fact that Mr. Steve Kane is at risk of losing his job due to the budget cuts, sorry, due to the budget cuts. So I wanted to make like a petition for students to sign, because he's made such an impact on everyone, not only for students, but like in the sports community. And I'm just going to read off what I wrote in the petition. So it says, "To the esteemed members of Carver School Committee and Superintendent Neef, we, the undersigned, represent the student body of Carver Middle High School, and we are writing to express our profound concern regarding the potential loss of Mr. Steve Kane from our school faculty. Mr. Kane is not just a teacher and a coach, but he is an integral part of our school community, embodying the spirit of Carver pride in every aspect of his work. Mr. Kane's contributions to our school extend far beyond the classroom. As a teacher, he has played a pivotal role in shaping the minds of his students, imparting knowledge with passion and dedication, and inspires us to strive for excellence. His ability to connect with students, foster a love for learning, and encourage critical thinking skills is unparalleled. In addition to his academic contributions, Mr. Kane's involvement in Carver Athletics has been nothing short of remarkable. His commitment to coaching goes beyond teaching sportsmanship and skills. He instills in us the values of hard work, perseverance, and team spirit. Mr. Kane sacrifices his personal time to ensure that we, as athletes, have the opportunity to excel, not only in sports but in life. His dedication to the athletic program and its participants has significantly enhanced our school spirit and unity. Losing Mr. Kane would be a devastating blow to not only our academic and athletic programs. It is not just the loss of a teacher and a coach, it would be the loss of a mentor, a role model, and a key figure in our community who has dedicated his time and efforts to bettering the lives of Carver students. Therefore, we respectfully ask the Carver School Committee and Superintendent Neef to consider the invaluable contributions of Mr. Kane that he has made for our school. We urge you to find an appropriate way to the necessary funds to retain Mr. Steve Kane as a teacher and a coach at Carver Middle High School. His departure would leave a void that could not easily be filled, impacting the quality of education and the athletic experience for current and future students. We hope that you will take our plea into consideration and act in the best interest of Carver Middle High School community by ensuring that Mr. Steve Kane remains a vital part of our school. Thank you for your attention in this matter, and then sincerely, to the people who signed it."
Thank you, Maeve. That was well stated.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to be recognized to speak? Okay, not seeing any movement towards the mic. Has anyone entered their name into the chat?
No one has entered their name into the chat on Zoom.
Okay, so seeing no movement and no names, we shall move on to the approval of minutes from our January 29, 2024 open session.
I move that we approve the January 29 open session meeting minutes. A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to communications.
The only communication we have this evening is that we did cancel school for tomorrow. So it will be, it will be a snow day. And that message has gone out to the community, so everybody should know, but I just wanted to say it here just in case someone missed it.
Yes, so everyone can sleep in tomorrow. Enjoy. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent and personnel updates.
Okay, we haven't had a lot of personnel movement since our last meeting, because we just met a couple of weeks ago. So we had one resignation, Renee Stone in Food Services, and we had one teacher let us know they're going to go on a leave of absence. Keandra Markram, teacher, Carver Middle High School, English teacher, she's going to be taking a family leave, actually, and extending it through all of next year. So she's going to be taking one year leave for the 2024-2025 school year.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to updates from the Student Advisory Council.
Sorry, my computer's being slow. One second. Okay, hi, everyone. Once again, I'm sorry that I was not here at the last meeting. I had another track meet. Since I last saw you, we've had some great stuff happen at the high school. As I'm sure some of you know, Carver hosted this year's Winter C-Mass Conference. This is where student councils from all across southeastern Massachusetts come together to share ideas, gain leadership skills, and of course, have fun and make friends. The conference was a huge success, and our E-Board and full council did such an incredible job planning and running it. I'm not going to give too much away, since I know that the student council plans on telling you all about it at some point in the upcoming months, but I will say that it was a ton of fun, and I am very proud of everyone who was involved. This week at the high school is French week, meaning that every day during Wynn, there are fun, French-themed activities to take part in. The language hallway is also decked out in a bunch of colorful and educational decorations that have a ton of information on different French customs. As for what specific activities are being offered, Ms. Genovese, our high school art teacher, is offering a Monet workshop, and there are various French movies being shown. French students are also getting the opportunity to learn about Mardi Gras, as that is tomorrow, and we're getting to make masks. Now, I'm going to step a little away from what's been going on in the school, then just to talk about Black History Month, because that is this month. Since 1976, every February has been designated by the U.S. President as Black History Month. Of course, there is never a bad time to celebrate Black excellence, but this month is especially important, as it is all about celebrating the achievements of African-Americans, as well as educating yourself on Black history in America and beyond. Today specifically, I want to talk about some of the struggles that Black people, especially Black women, face in the field of education, as well as give you some information on a few Black figures who have changed the face of education in America. Most school districts, including our district, have predominantly white staff members. The history of why this is goes back to the days where schools were segregated. Black children used to be sent to Black schools while white children were sent to white schools. Traditionally, the schools for children of color were extremely underfunded and just generally had poorer conditions and learning materials than white schools. It wasn't until 1954, during the case of Brown v. the Board of Education, that this segregation ended, and even still, the fight wasn't and isn't over. Many Black children were bullied and harassed by their white peers, and many Black teachers lost their jobs, as they were in the longer specifically colored schools. The number of Black educators in our school system hasn't really increased since then, with a great deal of that being due to the prejudice that Black teachers are often faced with. They have to deal with snide remarks from students, microaggressions that may go unreported or be brushed off, and so much more. It's clearly disheartening to hear about what these educators have to go through, but we can only fight to ensure that things continue to trend in a positive direction and work towards making the educational realm a welcoming space for all minorities. As for specific Black people who have made waves in education, I'd first like to talk about Lucy Kraft-Laney. She was a civil rights activist and one of the first Black women to study at Atlanta University in 1869. She went on to establish the very first school for Black children in Augusta, Georgia, where she served as the principal for half a decade, half a century. Next, Carolotta Wells-Lanier. She was the youngest member of the Little Rock Nine, who were the first Black students to attend Little Rock Central High School, and she played a major role in sparking the topic of racism in schools in America. The bravery of the Little Rock Nine and the overwhelmingly positive consequences of their bravery cannot be understated. Lanier went on to become president of the Little Rock Foundation, a group that has been fighting for equality for students of color ever since. Lastly, I'd like to tell you about Inez Beverly Prosser. She was the first Black woman to earn a PhD in psychology and did extensive research on the effects of segregated versus non-segregated schools on African-American children. Her main passion was finding ways to educate Black students and make them excited about learning, as well as looking after the mental health of Black students who were constantly subjected to racism. Though I'm going to end my report here, there are hundreds of Black people and Black educators who have changed our education system for the better. We would definitely not be in the place that we are today in education without their effort and their achievements, yet they are often overlooked. So I encourage you to look into how Black people have completely redefined education and be extra attentive and receptive to Black voices in February and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to bus route reorganization. And Ron?
Hi, everyone. My report for you is a little more perfunctory than all of this, but a couple of weeks ago, you may remember, we reported that we lost one of our drivers who went on leave ultimately, and we're still struggling to find a replacement for that position, a real placement for that position. Drivers in general, super hard to find, both for van drivers and CBL, like the big yellow buses. So in the meantime, with this patchwork of substitutes and occasionally double runs, which are not ideal, it's not what we'd like to do, in response to that, our thinking has been, instead of having to sort of patchwork this through the rest of the year if we can't find a driver, our amazing Transportation Director, Maureen, has worked with her team, and they're proposing a model in which we'll absorb one of the routes and sort of redistribute parts of that route to other routes throughout the district. It's a pretty big lift, so you know, during the summer each year, that team, Maureen and the team, sort of pull together all the data and they reset all of the routes for our year. She's begun doing that now with the goal of launching a new set of routes for March 4th. What does this mean ultimately? A couple of things. First, it would mean... does this mean ultimately? A couple of things. Um, first, it would mean that, uh, about two-thirds of our routes will have some amount of impact to it. Now, because it's going across all of the routes, that's a relatively small impact, so it may be a few minutes change on any given route. Uh, individual student stops will not change, so the kiddos go into one stop tomorrow, on March 4th, the stop will be the same, but the bus that shows up and the driver who's driving that bus might ultimately be different. We've done a dissolve, one route for both the elementary school and middle high school, and by distributing that, the bus drivers and the buses themselves change around a little bit. A couple other implications for this change, uh, there's no implications for special education students and no preschool students will be affected at all. Um, students will have, again, the same bus stop. The pickup and drop-off time may be different, but it'll be adjusted by just a few minutes in either direction ultimately. And so we realize this is a big change, like we do every year, for the summer, we send out communication about this. So we're planning to do a layered set of communications that can go out as reminders over the next couple of weeks. It's, uh, apologies in advance, it's going to be annoying, because you'll get the same exact communication from us a couple of times, but in my experience, with any time you have changes, it's better to say the thing a couple of times, so folks can make sure they see it, it doesn't get buried in the email, and they've got time to sort of process that change, right? So what we'll do is, uh, this week, uh, we'll have an initial email that goes out to all families. Uh, it'll have a link to all the new route information, just like you get during the summer. So the mechanism is very much the same, uh, it just may change, again, the number of your bus, uh, the driver of your bus, and the time by a few minutes in either direction, right? We'll do another communication, identical communication over the February break. I know folks are away sometimes, but just as a way to reiterate the same information, and then we'll do that same communication yet again on the week of the 26th. So we'll do three of the same exact communication, says, "Hey, folks, reminder, start of March 4th, you might have a different driver. Here's the list of all the drivers and all the routes. Here's the list of all the buses." Uh, some families may not be affected, but we thought it'd be best to just communicate all the information to all families in Carver, because we also recognize that sometimes it's not mom and dad who's doing the pickup, it's Nana or grandpa. You know, that happens with me and my kids sometimes, you know, my mother-in-law's doing the pickup on Tuesdays or whatever, just want to make sure she's got information as well, and so does everyone else, right? Uh, last couple of sort of wrinkles on this thing, we'll also make sure that we coordinate with the elementary school as well. You know, when we think about this launch every year, we do a lot of work with the elementary school in particular, with our youngest kiddos, right? So with our kindergarten students and our first grade students, for a lot of them, it's their first time on the bus in the summer. Now, some of those kiddos have been on the bus now for several months, so they're at least used to the bus, but they're still our youngest learners, so we're spending some time over the next couple of weeks to work with the elementary administrative team, as well as the early grades teams, to make sure that they're talking with the kiddos about what this is, they're changing out bus tags. We do this cute little thing where we have this like, um, icon for each bus, so you might be on the elephant bus or the giraffe bus, wherever it might be. My point is, we'll change all the icons well in advance, so kiddos have lots of notice about this, and they get into that routine of saying, "Hey, I'm now going to be on the elephant bus," wherever it might be. So there's a lot of information, uh, to sort of share with you. There's no action to take at this time, but I just wanted to make the community aware. I thought this would be a nice sort of venue to sort of start that conversation and make folks aware about it. Information will go out again this week, so people are, are aware of it, and there'll be contact information at the end of that email if you have questions about your route or your stop, which again, will be very much the same, uh, or your driver, whatever it might be, you can reach out to us, ask any questions that you want, to make sure that this transition goes smoothly. Uh, open up to any questions that you might have, or maybe something I might miss.
Anyone have any questions? Um, do you? Okay, thank you, and thank you for, um, sending out the communication to everyone. Um, I think it's important hearsay sometimes can, can cause confusion and concern, so, um, I think it's great, so everyone please watch your emails, and, um, thank you for the update. And that brings us to the FY25 budget presentation.
You're getting a heavy dose of Ron tonight, sorry.
It's great, it's a great one. We appreciate all of your efforts, so.
So you've had a few, uh, budget presentations now in our series of budget developments. Um, today is really an update on where we stand, and, uh, you can sort of see our summary here, but the big picture is, I'll give a quick reminder of where we were, because it's a few weeks ago since last we talked about budget. I'll share with you a couple of updates, sort of changes, you know, as, uh, we tidy up the numbers on both the expenses and the revenue side. Uh, as I'm sure you've heard, there's a gap right now, so we'll talk a little bit about a strategy to balance that budget, and then I'll give you an executive summary and then next steps, things to come, yeah? Uh, every time I talk about money, I just like to make a moment, uh, here to say, like, the reason we spend time talking about money is to support all the great things you hear about every time we're at a school committee meeting, right? And so you see here, our priorities are obviously to maintain level services for our kiddos, uh, again, focusing on our educational blueprint, and to continue to develop the pathways over the middle high school as a priority for the district across the board. So here's your big picture from the last meeting. The next couple of slides are just a refresher from last meeting, because I know this stuff can be dense. So last time we talked, you know, we're facing this shortfall, a little better part of 865,000. You see your total revenue, minus your operating budget there, and there's your deficit, right? Uh, again, as a reminder, the primary driver of this really has been an increase in special education out of district tuition costs. That's a function of both enrollment and tuition rates themselves, uh, changing over time. And our primary, uh, primary driver in revenue typically is state and local aid, um, with the emphasis on local aid even more than state aid, right? So over the past few weeks, we've been refining both the revenue and the expense projections, and I'll share with you a little bit about the work that, uh, has happened there and some of the outcomes from it. So updates on the expense side of the ledger will break up, uh, the theme that you'll see here is, we'll break it up into expenses, what it costs to operate our school department, and then the revenues that are required to sort of support all of the work that we do. So starting on the expense side, uh, mostly expenses have come down over the past couple of weeks, which is typical. We try to really refine our work, you know, as we, um, try to close a gap there. Uh, but one exception is telecom increase, so we do have an increase there. The district and all districts have to implement this thing called E911. I'll give you 30 seconds on it, but ask me more if you want to. Essentially, the law has changed and requires that any, uh, public entity like schools that allow for, uh, connection to 911 have to connect their system to like an individual identifier. So if you call from the middle high school right now, well, a few months ago, it would have just said, "911 call from Carver Middle High School." Now it says, "911 call from the gymnasium or from room 115." That level of specificity was work that our technology team did. They did a brilliant job sort of building all of that infrastructure in place. Anyway, there's additional cost to that. Those are mandated costs, that's additional. Uh, other changes on the expense side, uh, again, we're really trying to reduce our supplies expenses. Only about 20% of your overall budget is stuff, is supplies, so there's only so much you can trim, right, before you don't have pens and paper, so we feel like we've trimmed that back as tight as we can. Same is true with looking at like replacement salaries. Whenever you have retirements, we can identify a projected potential replacement, and typically, when you retire, you retire at a higher level of scale, and then we bring someone that's typically at the lowest. So we've done a lot of that work. I will say your largest savings between our last meeting and this meeting has actually been special education, because that's just the largest expense, right? So we, we set February 1st as like our line in the sand for special education tuitions, and we say, "Look, as of this point, February 1st, this is what we believe to be our special education out of district tuition costs, and anything thereafter, we lean on our special education reserve." That's coming a little bit better now that we've hit that February 1st mark. We're always conservative with that, but once we hit February 1st, that's our line in the sand. Um, we've tried to do, I mean, these are small things. Superintendent Neef and I, uh, volunteered to forego any contractual increases for next year. It's not big money, but we realize that we're facing a shortfall, so every little penny counts. Net expenses all in are down by about $100,000, which is great news to hear, yeah? Other side of that ledger is the revenues. You've probably read about the governor's budget at this point. It came in below what most folks were predicting. Uh, our town does a five-year average, it came below that. So that ultimately reduces our state aid, which frankly, isn't very much anyway. We also had some unanticipated costs associated with some enterprise funds that sort of reduced a little bit on the local end. Uh, I will say, there's no change yet in the annual offset projection for like health insurance, which can be pretty big, right? So there's one that's still out there. Um, and some shared costs and those things like that haven't been finalized, but all in your net revenue ends up being down about 130,000. So while the expenses are going down, which is great, your projection for revenue is also going down, which nets you negative 30, sort of in the wrong direction, yeah? So you can see your balance on the right side is the better part of $900,000. You know, one thing I do want to say, especially when people talk about revenue projections, and there's a shortfall in any community, and many communities are facing this kind of similar shortfall, there can sometimes be this like tension between like the school departments and the town departments, and, uh, two things. One, I think the school really enjoys a, a very positive relationship and collaborative approach with the town, and also, I just want to underscore, the school's currently projecting about a 6% increase. The large majority of that is local funds, as you've seen in most of my presentations. So you've got a town who's incredibly supportive of your school department, and I think that's rare, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, sort of say that again publicly, and I would mention that regularly in terms of looking at chapter 70 versus local aid. Uh, but despite the shortfall that we're seeing, we have a substantial portion of your revenue increase coming from local town receipts, yeah?
And the only point I'd put on that, just to emphasize the 6%, that is probably the highest we've seen from the town in, we don't know the exact number of years, uh, but definitely in my, in my years as superintendent, uh, the town hasn't given us an operational increase of 6%. But the reality is, we're still short, uh, because we need more than 6%.
The, this other little slide I have here, maybe it just gives you some context for this conversation about state versus local aid. The little grid you see on the left, a colleague of mine actually put it together, I can't take credit for it. Uh, but what it is, it's a consolidation of data from DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, little sense of sort of how to read it. On the left-hand side are the number of districts around the state. In the middle column is just the percentage of those districts, right? And on the right-hand side is the increase in chapter 70 money. So the difference from this year, FY24, to FY25, governor's budget, yeah? I'll actually start with that second to the bottom, where you see one district in the Commonwealth got a 39% increase in their chapter 70 money. That's that SOA that we've talked about a few times, Student Opportunity Act, right? If you go all the way to the top, you can see, you know, there's about 62 districts, about 19% of all of them, of which Carver is one, they got less than 1% increase in chapter 70 from this year that we're in, FY24, to next year in FY25. Your total number down there shows you you're less than a half percent increase. So again, uh, yes, you're getting funding from the state, it's great, better part of 10.5 million, but the actual increase, uh, for us, and as you can see, the better part of three-quarters of all districts in the Commonwealth, really come from your local tax base. I know we've talked about this before, but I just, I saw that the other day from a colleague, and I wanted to share that with you.
I know, that's great. Thank you very much for sharing that.
So, uh, last bit in con, in terms of recent updates, right, things that have happened between last meeting and this meeting, we still have a bunch of things that we're not sure about yet, so the state legislature hasn't finalized the budget figures. I want to be plain with you, I don't expect to see a substantial swing or change from the governor's budget to legislative budget. I hope I'm wrong, um, but just taking a look at the tax collections, and I'll talk about more of that in my, my upcoming presentation on FY24, state tax collections aren't looking great, so I can't imagine the state legislature coming in and really swinging that dramatically. As I mentioned, health insurance rates haven't been published yet. Uh, I don't anticipate a big change there either, but more to come on that as we, we learn more about it. And then, as we mentioned, you know, finalizing other, you know, local revenue projections, shared cost calculations, those kinds of things. Any one of those things coming in different than what we plan right now would allow us to sort of change our plan to close that gap, right? Increases in revenue, any combination of ways can do that. So more to come on those in the next couple of weeks. So, you're faced with the better part of $900,000 as a gap. It's a substantial gap for a community of our size. So what I've put in front of you today is a proposal to balance that budget. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about it in a moment, but just to give you a sense of sort of orientation, we'll talk about the, you know, expenses side of this work. We'll highlight that in blue for you, and then anything that's in revenue you'll see in green. Uh, in general, we're going to try to take this sort of balanced approach to balancing the budget.
Sorry about that.
So again, DOR, the Department of Revenue in Massachusetts, requires that all communities, and therefore all school districts, have a balanced budget. And so if there's no changes in all those things I just mentioned, uh, then we'd have to have some plan to balance your budget, yeah? And I guess I just want to name, before we get into the numbers, uh, there's no ideal scenario here. There's no solution, there's no playbook you can pull out and go, "900,000, how do you close that gap?" You do page four. There's no, um, there's no singular approach to this, but I would say, in my experience, typically, it's best to sort of take this multilateral approach, right? Rather than just using one lever to try to close that gap, you try to tackle it from both sides of the ledger, right? By reducing your expenses, you have to do some of that, and also sort of using some one-time funds to offset the impact, right? Neither of those are perfect. I want to be plain and really transparent with you about that, um, but by doing them together, sort of helps ameliorate some of the impact of any one of them, yeah? So we're going to start on the, uh, ex, uh, expense side of the budget. Again, in order to offset that increase in special education tuitions, you have to reduce expenses in other places. If those expenses are way up, you've got to bring expenses in other places down a little bit. Uh, the better part of not 80% of your budget is staffing, and so, uh, trimming on the, you know, supplies and things like that, you can certainly do that, but really only to, to, to some extent. And I feel like, at this point in your budget process, we've really trimmed that back as far as it can be. So our proposal would be to reduce your salaries by the better part of $430,000. That cuts the gap in half, roughly. Uh, again, it's certainly not ideal, and it's not zero impact, but it minimizes your impact, right? The other part of that approach would be to use some one-time revenues. Uh, again, also not really ideal, but it creates a balanced approach to this. Best pack, best practice generally when it comes to all revenues, but certainly one-time revenues, is to stay at least one year to the good. This way, you really know what your number is coming in, because you're really building off last years, and you continue to do that year after year after year. Uh, I'd say the district has been fortunate in that we've taken a really, uh, conservative approach to our financial planning, and so you have one year to the good for a lot of these reserve funds, things like Circuit Breaker, for example, which we spent a lot of time in our last presentation on, uh, school choice and those sorts of things. So you'd use those funds this upcoming year, sort of offset that gap, yeah? Um, two things I'd say about that before we go on. The first is just a word of caution. Any, for every dollar you use of one-time funds, you're setting up a financial cliff for yourself, right? If you use one-time funds to offset an operating cost that you'll use annually, uh, it means that next year that cost isn't going to come back up, and now those one-time funds aren't there for you, so you have to build that in. Which, again, is sort of a, a reason why you want to think about this in sort of a duality, both expenses and revenues. You have some flexibility here, so you can use some one-time funds, and most school districts do, but you do, you want to be cautious about how much you use there ultimately. The second thing I would just say is, uh, using those funds does, uh, impact your financial position, but that's the reason why you create a strong financial position, so that if you're in a bad spot like you're in, you have some flexibility, right, to be able to ameliorate some of that impact. So on the right, that's sort of the graphic interpretation of what we're doing here, um, reducing your salary costs by the better part of 430, increasing that one-time revenue usage by about 465. We'll go into detail about what that looks like ultimately. Um, the reason you do that, again, is you don't overexpose, you know, you don't create overexposure on your revenue, uh, and you try to minimize the amount of impact you have on the reduction in expenses, yeah? I guess the last I would just say is, you know, uh, it doesn't, uh, it minimized the impact, but it's not zero impact. So we'll take some time today and kind of walk through what that impact is, and the plan that the district will implement to, uh, try to address some of that impact.
So I'm going to transition, start discussing, uh, the positions, uh, that we've discussed or presented this evening, uh, to reduce, uh, that $430,000 in salaries. Uh, no, I'll start by saying, first of all, um, there are really no good decisions. Um, that any cuts we make are painful, and is gonna, they're gonna have an impact, because we're going to have, uh, if this plan were to be implemented, um, we're going to have fewer staff. Uh, at any time, we're going to have fewer staff. We can't have fewer staff without impact. Uh, so we have to acknowledge that upfront. Uh, and we don't want to make any of these cuts. So, yes, this is a proposal in saying, because we have to make a proposal, because we have to close this gap of $900,000, and we're trying to take that balanced approach as Ron just took us through. Um, but that doesn't mean we like making this proposal or we're here saying, "This is what, uh, we think is the, the right thing to do." So we're going to continue in this process, and, and I've said to people, um, that this, in some ways, I know we've been making budget presentations, we've been talking about this for, at least since the beginning of January, and as an administrative team, really back in November, December. in November, December. But in some ways, this is kind of the beginning of the process. You know, we have between now and town meeting to see what we can do to change the factors, to work with the community, to work with the town, to see how we can find other ways to narrow the gaps. And then also, you know, we're going to be, keep looking at those things that could change, because there are factors that could change. You know, so obviously, I want to be really clear that we're not asking the committee to take any action tonight. Certainly, we're looking for your thoughts and your input, but we're not looking for decisions to be made. I think we're, we're pretty far away from that, actually. But we have to start somewhere, in terms of making a proposal of how we close this gap. And tonight's our initial presentation on what we would offer as ways to close that gap. I will say that, you know, as we, as we worked with the administrative teams to identify, and it's going to be a total of six positions, three at the middle high school and three at the elementary school, that when we worked with the administrative team to look at these cuts, we, things we tried to focus on were, to the best of our ability, maintaining an appropriate class size, maintaining class offerings, and particularly within our pathways programs. And then, looking in specific areas, maybe the number of students who'd be impacted by a decision. Now, some of these decisions on this list are going to have a wider student impact than others, but then, but then you have to compare that to other choices we would have to make. And so we looked at that concept of, which, which have the choice that we feel has the, a lower amount of student impact. They all have student impact, so saying that they don't, well, I can't make that claim. It's there. But we want, we tried to balance those things out to the best of our ability, looking at those kind of concepts of class size, cost, course offerings, and student impact. And then going back to the beginning of our presentation, in terms of our priorities, of what we want to do as a district in supporting the district's vision and educational blueprint. I will say that, so we're going to list the six positions, I'm going to go through them. This is not in a rank order, so right now, this presentation isn't saying, this would be the first position we would cut, and this would be the sixth position we would cut. These are just the six positions, with no ranking and no prioritizing one position over another. Eventually, we may have to do that, and eventually, as we, as we move through this process over the next couple of months, hopefully, we'll have to do that. Hopefully, we'll have to do that in some ways, because, A, well, the, the ultimate scenario would, they would, none of these things would be happening, but I think we have to have, be somewhat realistic, and I think it would be a very long road to get to that place. And, but as things change and as things shift, we will have to prioritize and hopefully take some things off the list. But tonight's presentation is not a rank order, it's just six positions, if that makes So we're actually starting at the elementary school. So the first proposed reduction would be to not replace one full-time classroom teacher, and it's going to be a teacher who'd be retiring, so no, no person would be losing their position. So what's the impact on that? And so for each one, we have a little, we have, we'll talk about the position, we'll talk about the impact a little bit. So currently, at the elementary school, there are 36 grade-level classroom teachers. The distribution for this year is on the left side of the screen. So we have five kindergarten teachers for a class of 100. We have six first-grade teachers for a class of 125. I don't have to read the whole chart for you, it's there in front of you. We do have seven teachers with the grade of the 140, in grade two. And we would make the shift next year with the reduction of one teacher by not replacing that retirement. Instead of having 36 classroom teachers, we would have 35 classroom teachers. The intent right now, the, our, what we would propose is that we would have, maintain six teachers in kindergarten. Now, that's assuming that we would bring in our typical kindergarten class size of about 120 students. For some reason, if that didn't happen, and we brought in only 100 students like we did last year in the kindergarten, then we might make some adjustments. So certainly, you know, this isn't, like all these things, none of these decisions are locked to stone, and this isn't locked in stone that we would go exactly this way, but based on our history and our knowledge, this is our thought process at this time, is that it would be six teachers for kindergarten, five teachers for the 100 students in first grade, and that would be able to maintain that, you know, average class size of 18 to 21. You know, obviously, five goes on 100, we can have 20 exactly, but there's always a little variation, there might be a 19, there might be a 21. And certainly, that's a, that's a, I think that's an appropriate class size. And then, it's also sustainable for a couple of years, because the reality is, we're going to have this class of 100 kids that are going to go through the elementary school. So maintaining five teachers there with appropriate class size is sustainable, at least over a couple of years. The other big shift here would be third grade. So currently, the second grade has seven teachers for 140 kids, which is your average class size of 19 to 22. The proposal for next year would be go to six teachers for 140 students, which would increase that class size. But in third grade, that's when we also go to teaming. So establish a teaming model with two teachers with each team and six teachers, makes sense. It was actually something that the administration was considering, even if there wasn't cuts. You know, so we may have gone to that model of having six teachers to better support the teaming model, because otherwise, you have either one person, one group of students who aren't on the team, or you're changed, you have to change your teaming configurations, which you can do. We've looked at different models of a three-person P team versus a two-person team. But in this scenario, we think it makes sense to go to six teachers and three teams with 140 students. We've done six teachers with teaming model with 140 students in the past, so this isn't the first time we've been doing this, it's, it's happened other years, based on our population at the elementary school. And I don't know if we want to take these one at a time and say, is there any questions about, number one, the reduction of an elementary teacher through, through retirement?
That sounds like the least painful of what we have to do today, so. Have we had anybody else give any indication that they're planning on retiring?
We do have another retirement at the elementary school, but at this time, we have that as we would have, our plan would be to replace that person. And that's factored into the budget, so we, and certainly, if another retired, that's just something that could change. You know, we could have someone come forward and let us know that they're going to retire, and that could change scenarios a little bit. So it's that kind of that whole thought process of, you know, really, over the next six weeks, things can change as they've changed over the last six weeks. But right now, there's only, only one announced retirement at the elementary school, but our intention is to replace that retirement.
Okay. I think it makes sense to take, to take it each.
Okay.
Each, each at a time, please. Does anyone else have any questions about that chart? Okay. Thank you.
Second position at the elementary school would be a reduction in the reading staff. There is currently two full-time and one part-time reading positions, so it's a 2.5 positions. We reduced it down to 1.5. This would certainly require us to make an adjustment in our reading intervention model, and we would focus on supporting students who need foundational skill development. We will say that through the reading program, there has been an increase in differentiation in classrooms through small group instruction, through conferencing, through text complexity, through leveled books. We've purchased, I think, communities where we've purchased all, all kinds of books. I won't point out for a number of the number of books we've purchased.
I have.
But she, I know she has, that's why I was going to ask.
Nice. How many books?
Over 1,500.
That are all, you know, leveled, so, you know, obviously, the thought process is through the implementation of the Unit of Study Reading curriculum, that, we're actually beginning to see some improvement, at least in our MAP data, in terms of student's reading skills. And then also, the design of that curriculum is to do a little bit more differentiation within the classroom setting. And that was one of the factors in terms of the selection of reducing a reading position. But ultimately, if we have one less reading teacher, we're going to be able to service less students directly in reading. You know, so that's certainly going to be an impact. So I don't know if there's any questions about the reduction of that position. The third position at the elementary school would be to reduce inclusion and special ed staff by one teacher. Currently, there is a inclusion and special ed teacher at each grade level, K through 5. And if you look on the left-hand side of the chart, you see the current caseloads. So kindergarten has 11 to 13, grade 1, 8 to 12. It's given as a range a little bit, because the reality is, caseloads are always shifting. You know, students can be identified for special education over time. And a, a pretty typical caseload would be around that 17 to 18, so we have some that are lower, some that are larger. So as we move forward into projecting to next year, we do believe that we can combine our current caseload of kindergarten and first grade, which is 11 and 8, and that we can combine those two into one inclusion teacher, 22 through 24 for, so we'd have one inclusion teacher doing grades 1 and 2. So kindergarten would have an inclusion, special education teacher, third grade would have their own teacher, fourth grade, fifth grade, et cetera. We'd be combining 1 and 2 for one inclusion teacher, having to service 22 to 24 students, which is a little bit of a higher load, but it's not an extreme load, and it's not a load we haven't had in the past. As you can see, the fifth grade currently, we're estimating that it would be around 25. I do think 25, in terms of inclusion and special ed load, gets, gets to the high end. And obviously, we've made that decision, because we try to, we do try to maintain and keep grade-level supports. But with our current numbers in first and second grade, it would make sense to combine those two. And also, just in terms of students' development, where they are in their growth, where they are in their skill development, having one teacher working with first and second grade, we feel like is a reasonable standard that we can meet. So any questions about the special education teacher at the elementary school?
No, I think it's just, we're all hoping numbers change, so this isn't our reality. But thank you for the detailed information, aside as it may be.
At the middle high school, and I, I will say that this is, this is a one position, so we're not rank ordering them, so, but I'll take a step back and say, we are rank ordering this one a little bit. This is really a restructuring based on student needs. So currently, at the middle high school, we, currently district-wide, we have two TVIs. A TVI is a teacher of visually impaired students. And we don't have a large number of visually impaired students in the district, so we, I will say that we, we're being a little intentionally vague, sort of like our special ed discussion from past meetings. You know, once you start talking about really small groups of numbers of kids, we don't want to be able to personally identify students through our presentation. So we're intentionally being a little vague on this one. So, you know, current staffing level is, is two full-time TVIs servicing less than 10 students throughout the district. And ultimately, through graduation, through different reasons, we have fewer students who require that service. And next year, we really have, by having one TVI, we will be able to meet the needs of the students who are currently in the district. So unless something cha, unless something changed by a student moving into the district, or we had some unknown source from outside the district that came in and changed those numbers, we can really meet the needs of the district through one vision specialist. So this one would be honestly a restructure that we'd be doing, whether or not we had a budget shortfall. And we actually had a little bit of a discussion, just in terms of transparency, of, we maybe should have even built this into the original budget, but we hadn't done that, so we didn't want to now say, okay, let's put this into the original budget. So ultimately, this is a restructure that, if somehow this $896,000 shortfall was resolved, we would still make this change. Because ultimately, we only need one TVI to service the students who are currently, who will be in the district next year.
Right.
Any questions about that position? So the second position at the middle high school is the reduction of one full-time adjustment counselor. And we'd be actually eliminating what we call our TAP program, which is the Transition Assistance Program, which is run by an adjustment counselor. So I, I do want to point out that we will still have three adjustment councils at the middle high school. One, one adjustment counselor who services our MAP and GAP and ACE's program, and then we'd have one middle school adjustment counselor who would service the general population, and one high school adjustment counselor who would service the general population. So our current staffing there is four adjustment councils, we'd be going down to three. So TAP service students are transitioning back to school after expended absence. So a student who's out for some, it could, the reasons why a student might be out for an extended period of time can vary. Generally, it tends to be medical, or medical-related, but they're not all medical. That, we actually have a service that we provide students as they transition back into school. They go into the TAP program, and they can spend anywhere from a few days to a longer period of time. Some students spend a month or two months in the TAP program, as, and they slowly go back into their full schedule, into their regular schedule. And the adjustment counselor works with them and their teachers, insisting that transition back. So far this year, the TAP program has served about 15 students. Typically, through the year, throughout the year, there's just a few students in the program at any given time, so it's not like the TAP program has 15 students in it at once. And we just believe that we can, we don't want to totally eliminate the TAP services, but our goal would be to, we can support this follow-through through other programming using existing staff and existing guidance staff. So we're still going to talk about it and think about how we can provide this service without the full-time adjustment counselor. And then, I will say that this is, this is one of those programs where we were looking a little bit at the number of students impacted. Certainly, a valuable program for us, an important program for us, and, but we feel like we can provide it in a different way. So more, more information to come on what that might look like, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any questions on the TAP adjustment counselor? And then, the, the final position would be the reduction of one full-time physical education teacher. You know, this will result in increased class sizes in gym. And one of the things that we're looking at, and one of our, one of the thoughts we're thinking about is that we would have to have a little bit of a handbook change or a policy change, and we'd allow varsity athletes to opt out of gym classes and take another course. We wouldn't require them to opt out, but a student who was participating as a varsity athlete at the middle high school would have the options and meet their phys ed requirement for graduation through participating as a varsity athlete. And we just kind of did an average class size here. Middle school PE classes, our current average class size is 19. I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but we actually offer 26, what I would call sections, because in the middle school phys ed classes are terms, so there's one, there's one class each term. And to run our middle school allied arts schedule, we need to have 24 classes. We have 26 this year, we need to have 24. So that's why we go from projected class size. Our current average, average class size in our 26 sections of middle school phys ed is 19. Our projected class size, if we went from 26 to 24, and we have to maintain 24, because we need that to run our allied arts schedule, because every middle school student gets gym in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade for at least one term. Some students get it for two terms, depending, and I can say, I know I'm getting into the weeds here a little bit, if they, if they're in, basically, students who aren't in chorus or a band, or have support study, those students only get one section of, they get one term of phys ed. Other students get two terms. So we actually need to have those 24 sections run, two for each grade level, each term, and to run our middle school allied arts rotation. So we're not going to have a huge impact on middle school gym class sizes, because we're going to go from 26 sections to 24, so the class size is going to go 19 to 21. Assuming that no students take the waiver, and I have some numbers on the waiver in a second, assuming no students take the waiver based on the reduction of high school phys ed classes, our current average class size is 18 students, it would go to a projected average class size of 26, which is fairly large. But our assumption is, that's why we're putting this concept of, or developing or building on this concept of allowing varsity athletes to meet their requirement and have a waiver through participating in varsity sports. So the numbers here are based on, no one takes the waiver. And every single student says, no, you know what, I love phys ed, and I'm going to meet my full phys ed requirement and take the regular number of full phys ed classes that I'm doing now. But obviously, we're going to, if we were to implement this change, we would encourage students to take the waiver, we would advocate for that, and I believe there are students who would do that. There are students who are participating in varsity sport, who would look to have the opportunity to take an additional pathways course, an additional elective course, versus their phys ed elective. And there's going to be some student athletes going to be like, no, I love my And there's going to be some student athletes going to be like, no, I want my phys ed elective, because I enjoy that, and that's what my passion is, and I want to be there. So that, that's how we call up these class sizes. The only other thing I want to mention is, especially at the middle school, because of the nature of that whole concept of some students get two terms of phys ed and only, and some students only get one, that average class size number is, is kind of a little bit of, it's a wider span than it usually is in most courses. So, you know, we have middle school gym classes that are as small as 12, and we have middle school gym classes right now that are as large as 25 or 26. And the same thing would probably happen next year, because it really falls on that whole concept of some students get it twice, some students get it once, so it's hard to make them exactly balanced. But if you take the straight numbers, the average class size is 19 now, and the average class size would be 21 next year. So our other piece on this is, so we're just looking at who would be eligible to get, take this waiver. So in the first semester, there were 117 juniors and seniors who participated in varsity athletics. Second semester is currently an anticipated 73. And we haven't started spring sports yet, we don't know exactly where it is, what the number would be. So we have close to 200 students. Some of these are going to, these are individual singular students. Some of these students may not take the waiver, many of them may not take the waiver. But if some of them do, that's going to help, in essence, have us have to run fewer sections of phys ed at the high school level, which will then impact our ability to not have that class size of 26. You know, we'll go back to more of a normal class size, assuming that students participate in the waiver. So schools have been moving towards this policy of developing athletic waivers. Some examples of schools that we are aware that do it, that we've been in communication with is Hanover, East Bridgewater, Treyton Regional, McConamet Regional. So there are, there are school districts who've implemented a similar type of policy. So any, any questions about the reduction of the physical education teacher?
I have two questions. One, would this impact the students that are in the health and wellness pathway?
The goal, the goal would be that it would not, that we'd still be able to run those electives.
Okay.
The run, the electives we're currently running.
Okay. And then also, if by some miracle, this position does not need to be cut from our FY '25 budget, would that waiver policy still be instituted?
I, it's something we can consider. So I, I can't tell you right now that we've made a solid decision that we would do that.
Yeah, I was just wondering where that, where that was.
I think that's something we could certainly consider, because where, where that can consider, in my mind, so I, so I have not had this conversation with Mrs. Cabral, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. Antel. So this is just my head thinking, which that can be scary. But ultimately, my thought process is, you might consider this waiver process if, if we're interested in it. Because I do think there are some students who are varsity athletes who had said, you know what, I'd rather, I'd rather take this class, I'd rather take a biotech elective than take phys ed, and they're certainly physically fit participating in an athletics and a varsity sport. The other thing, and it's to answer your question, is that if we did have to reduce this position, I actually think it is something we should still consider, because it might actually allow us to maybe expand on some of the things we're doing that are non-traditional physical education course in terms of building out the health and wellness pathway. Certainly not promoting that we can expand now.
Right, right.
Because we're not in that position. You know, we're going to, we're going to, it's going to be tough to maintain what we're doing. But if we went, if we looked, if we did look at something like this, I think we'd have that possibility to consider that if the phys ed position isn't reduced, we're able to bring that back, that we might actually be able to build that pathway out a little bit more through offering the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, the long-term answer is, it will be considered.
Yeah, thank you. I think it, I think it would be attractive to a lot of students, because like you said, it would give them an opportunity to take a different elective or maybe expand, you know, take a class in something else that they could be interested in, because we all know how much of a commitment it is to play a varsity sport.
Any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions?
I mean, I just have a question, generally speaking, if none of these positions are taken in any particular order, and the deficit does get better, I mean, how do you decide where?
Yes, so obviously, we're going to go back to the administrative team and sit down and prioritize positions of which position would come back first. And certainly, so the school committee can weigh in on that and, and say, this is what, this is what we'd like to see come back first. And I think the, I think the community's going to weigh in on that. I think the administrative team's going to weigh in on that. I think the school committee's going to weigh in on that. So I think there'd be a lot of discussion around that.
Is there, I mean, is there still hope with getting the shortage cut down further that we wouldn't have to take all positions?
Well, I guess we'll go, that's kind of, this, that brings us to, well, I don't know if I want to do this, this, this is just the balance, how this balances out, you know, so we have a, a reduction of four, $430,000. So right now, based on the, so we said we reduced our costs a little bit. So last time, I think we made the presentation, we were saying to level service, we needed 8.1. So now we're saying we need 7.8 to level service, because we reduced things by $100,000. Right. And the town actually had to reduce, their revenue was down a little bit more. We added, I think they were at 6.2. So we were saying, we need 8.1, the town was giving us 6.2. So now we're saying we need a 7.8% increase, the town's able to give us a 6.1% increase. And we're meeting that shortfall through $430 in these six positions we just talked about, and $464,959 in one-time, you know, school choice circuit breaker, additional use of one-time funds. So that, that would balance the budget. So what can change, and Ron and I, we can both talk about this. So, you know, over the next several weeks, these are things we're going to continue to work with the town to refine. We haven't finalized the health insurance costs. So we'll be, well, we will have a number on that, hopefully by, by, by the March, when we meet on March 4th, that we'd have a finalized number there. We're still working with the town on shared costs. And remember, so one point of advocacy that we had last time that we talked about a lot, it's not in today's presentation, was that whole concept of having a reserve fund for financing a new middle high school. And right now, the town in its budget has $225,000 that they would be allocating towards the fund to build a new middle high school. And we talked about, first of all, that, that number might be a little high for what we need for feasibility study, and the, and the fact is, certainly, we want to promote the concept of the town saving money for a feasibility study, because that feasibility study has to be paid for upfront, has to be paid for by the town, not reimbursable by MSBA. Well, 10 years from now, when we go, 15 years from now, who knows how the consequences will change.
Maybe, maybe it will be.
We have to go, we have to go under the current rules.
Yep.
Under the current rules, that's our understanding is, so that's not, but we wouldn't want to have more money than that, because everything else is reimbursed by MSBA. So why would the town want to put in an extra $3 million or $2 million to a project when the tax, the state's going to give you half of that? And if you put, if you put that money in, that comes off the top then. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't get factored into the formula for what is reimbursement. So one of our points of advocacy, I'm getting very specific here, is that we're going to say, let's take that out of the current operating shared costs budget and fund that in a different way. You know, maybe through an allocation of free cash every year, and make an analysis of saying, we're going to take X number of dollars from free cash, and we're going to put that towards the feasibility study for the new middle high school, remove it from the operating budget. Removing $225,000 from the operating budget, if we go to our spread and shared costs, the town gets 32%, and it's not the exact number, 31.6, and we get 68.4, right? Those are the exact numbers. And so that would, now we just reduced our shortfall by $175,000. So now that number's changed by $175,000, and we can bring some positions back. You know, the cherry seed estimates might change, we don't, we don't think that's going to go real fast. Doesn't seem likely. And then also, we're going to be, we're going to be keeping, looking at what our expenses are in terms of, of moving forward. But I, I think our real, our real point of advocacy is going to be kind of looking at some of those shared costs.
Yep.
And see if we can reduce some of those places. The other thing is, the town is looking, saying they're still evaluating, they haven't finalized their local receipts. So they have a projection for local receipts, but they haven't finalized that number yet. So we could see, and the sense is, if, not saying we're going to see a positive trend in the local receipts, but there's not a sense that that number's going to go down. And when they finalize that number, that may change positively for us. So, you know, if we get one or two of these things, we got to change in local receipts, health insurance changes a little bit, we will change one of those shared costs. But that goes back to that conversation, is, we, right now, we honestly don't see a solution for $900,000.
Right.
We don't feel like the town's just going to say, oh, okay, we found 900, here's $900,000. And I don't know if we're going to currently find within our own budget $900,000. But we do think there's an opportunity for some of those things to be mitigated and for that number to come down. And that's what we're going to work at over the next couple of months. So, Colleen, I don't know if that answered your question?
Yes, it does. I just, for the benefit of everyone in the room.
Could you go to one of the little slides that has the two arrows there? I just wanted, one other thing I just add, someone asked, like, what if we get additional revenue that comes in from any of these sources? You know, what's the process to think about prioritization? And while, you know, my recommendation is probably not popular, I just want to be plain about it, from a financial perspective, I'd really encourage the conversation, again, to be balanced, right? So if there is additional revenue that is able to come in, that yes, you reduce your reduction in expenses, of course, but you also, best practice would be to also reduce the amount of one-time revenue you were using too. Right? And that's not as exciting, certainly, but it's, it's really good financial policy. And so I just wanted to name that while we're talking about, you know, the opportunity for additional revenue, that we'd want to think about that balanced approach from both sides of ledger as well. If you need to.
And so this evening, like I said, we're not, we're not asking the community to take any action, we're not recommending any action, we're just putting out a possible solution to this, you know, little less than $900,000 shortfall. We would certainly answer any of the questions you have at this time and say that, you know, our intention, I do think that, looking at the calendar, you know, so town meeting is April 9th and 11th.
9th and 11th.
I know that there's been a little bit of discussion at town hall about changing town meeting. I don't know if that's official at all, I think it was discussed, at least the finance committee brought it up at their meeting and said, should we be looking at changing town meeting because of, you know, our current shortfall in budget deficit? So, but I think right now, that hasn't happened, so we have to stay with the timeline of a town meeting on April 9th and 11th. So I do think we need to add a meeting in, at least one. So our thought process would be that we would do, we have to do a formalized public hearing of the budget, so we would call the public hearing as the March 4th meeting. And honestly, my recommendation at this time was that the school committee not vote, not vote a budget at the March 4th meeting.
No.
But we would still do the public hearing of the budget. And then we look to pick another meeting date prior to April 7th, and then we'll see where we are in the process of when the school commission moves to vote its final, vote a final budget number. I don't know if it makes sense to do that now, or before we do that, just have people ask other questions if they have them, or make other comments.
I think we should set a date.
So we have a scheduled meeting on March 4th. You know, I can do the 18th or the 25th, either one, if we stay with Monday nights.
Which one will give us, do you think?
I think the 20, 25th is more time.
The 25th, right?
I think the 25th. I feel like there's just, it's so open-ended, and there's so many moving parts, and nothing is set in stone at this point for, on the town side, so I would like to move it out as, I would say the 25th, too.
Yeah, and I, I thought process of the 20, well, if we do the 25th, that that, you know, the focus of that meeting would be the, the budget, it wouldn't necessarily be a reg, a regular school committee meeting, we may not do the regular full agenda we usually do, and just be a budget discussion.
Okay. Does that work for everyone?
It really works. So Monday, March 25th. And certainly, the committee can add in other meetings, we can meet as often as we need to.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, hopefully, we'll have to call a meeting for good news.
Yep.
Right? Okay, so we'll do our typical 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM on the 25th.
Okay, great. With that, does anyone have any additional questions regarding this? I mean, clearly, this is not where we want to be, the numbers aren't final, they're going to keep moving, and just so everyone's aware, in case there's any doubt at all in anyone's mind, there's a lot of advocating that's happening behind the scenes. I think you can tell from our expressions and just from our, our overall emotions that this is not something that any of us want to, want to face. You know, unfortunately, it's, it's always education that seems to end up being cut. But Carver is not alone in this situation, I do want to stress that. It's not just our community, it's communities across this, across the Commonwealth, across the country that are facing budget shortfalls right now. One thing I can say definitively about Carver is that we have been very conservative with our use of one-time funds versus other districts didn't have that luxury, and they're facing much larger layoffs because they did use that, their S R funds and their opera funds to fund salaries in their salary schedule and employee staff. So we are very fortunate that we, I guess, we brought in some part-time positions during COVID, but those were never intended to be long-term, except for we were able to keep the second school nurse at the middle high school, because it's important that our students have those services and care available to them. So I just want everyone to, to realize that this is not unique to Carver, and I just implore everyone to please pay attention, please come to meetings, please save the date for town meeting, whatever that date's going to be, and please show up. And please, if you have questions, you know, reach out to the district, and hopefully, it'll be a brighter picture as we get closer to needing to vote a budget. So just wanted to, to make that abundantly clear to everyone.
Certainly, I would make myself available to discuss this with anybody who'd like to meet with me and have a discussion about, you know, to the, the best of my ability.
And we appreciate that, and we appreciate all the collaboration. I know Scott and Ron have worked very, very hard with the town, I know that there's a great amount of collaboration on both sides, and we're also very fortunate, and Ron had highlighted that earlier, but that's simply not the case in other communities. So we're really fortunate to be where we are, as difficult as this could potentially be, so. I'll get off my soapbox now. So that brings us to something that's a little bit, I think that will vary, right? Your budget's all set? Okay, so that takes us to the culinary classroom project update.
Yep, so a little more positive. You know, so the culinary project continues to move along at a good pace. The current timeline still has an anticipation, anticipated completion date in mid-April. Hopefully, prior to April vacation, we'll be done, and the classes and the students and chef will be able to move back in to the culinary classroom after April vacation. This is actually an improvement of several days since we last met, so each time we meet with them, I feel like the timeline on the classroom improves a little bit. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll get another update on, on how they're progressing. You know, I think that they're, they, they want to, they don't want to overpromise and under-deliver. So I think each time we meet, the timeline improves a little bit. So hopefully, that trend will continue. And then, like I have lots of meetings, I just have a couple pictures of what's been happening recently in the culinary classroom. So these pictures were taken today. It's hard to tell, the floor is in, but that's not the real floor, they're covering the floor right now to protect it.
Yeah.
Because I told you that, last time we met, that the floor actually, the way it's designed, it goes up behind the walls. So usually, in a construction project, you're going to actually put, you know, the floor goes in last, you know, you don't put the floor in first, but, but by the nature and the design of this project, the floor is going to go up behind the walls, so the floor had to go in first. So you can see the protection is down on the floor, but you can kind of see the floor goes up on the wall a little bit. And then, it's hard to tell, but this back wall is actually the walling system, so it's the actual walls. So today, they were working on putting the walls in themselves, which are kind of cool. See what we have. Back to the agenda. There's a lot of workers in there today, so it restricted my pictures a little bit, because I didn't want to take pictures of all the people working in the room. So this is just, actually, this is the other side of the room, opposite where the new wall's going in. There's nothing exciting there, except you can see again that wall, this is that floor surface going up the side of the wall. Oh, and the, oh, I think the hood was in last time. Yeah, so last time we had met, the answer.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, so they, they just put the hood in that day last time we had met.
Just trying to remember if I saw it when I went in there on the, the night of that open house.
Yeah, I did.
Oh.
It's nice. It's very exciting.
Hold on one second, I closed the wrong thing. So give me a second. Can I get it back up?
It was so great to see and hear chefs' excitement.
Yes.
He's like a little kid in a candy store every time I see him in there. It's so great, yeah.
It's becoming more, yeah, it gets more real every time.
I can't wait to see what the, what the students can do.
Sorry about this. Close, like, close the agenda instead of the picture.
And has a color palette been picked out yet? Yeah?
I'll try that again.
Very exciting.
Actually, on the screen again, so people at home can see. All right, there we go. And this is just a little, a little bit better picture of that walling system. So the walls, the wall is not going to be blue, but it's going to be white. So that first pic, I probably took the pictures in a bad order. The first picture was the white wall that's going over the blue wall. So this was the installation of the blue wall that was going in today. The white wall goes above it. It's a clean surface. I think we talked about this last time, that in theory, they could bring in a, a power washer and spray down the wall. So it's industrial kitchen-based solution. And that was all happening today, actually. So they were, that, that's the group that's in there, there's a group installing, installing the walling system. So that should actually be done within the next couple of days. So every time we go in, we're going to see some new and exciting things happening within the culinary classroom. And we'll give you, by March, actually, I think by March 4th, yeah, we'll be, we'll be seeing things move a little bit. So that'll be good. So any questions on update for the culinary classroom?
No, thank you for keeping us updated. It's nice to have something positive to look forward to, as we do with all of the upcoming events in our district.
So there's, and March is a long month, as I think everybody knows. We go to school, March is the month, every, you go to school every day.
Actually, this year, we have an early Easter, so we do.
Do, actually, there is, there is, right, there's Good Friday. Good Friday is in March this year, not, that's usual. But, but when you look, when you look at the, when you look at the March upcoming events.
76, 75.
It's on, the March upcoming events are on two pages.
Oh, my goodness.
There's a lot of stuff happening in March. But we can go to, and obviously, I'm not going to read this for everybody, but I will put it up for a second, let people take a look at it, as we usually do. We did talk about, at a couple meetings back, so we have established a bullying prevention intervention task force. The first meeting, that group is going to be the Tuesday after the revocation. And that group's going to meet in March as well.
So make sure you have it on your calendar.
Yeah, and you should have got a letter invitation at some point. We sent, we sent them to everybody. It was like, oh, maybe, yeah. We mailed, we mailed them out to everybody as reminders.
The prevention ones?
Yeah. But if not, make sure it's on your calendar.
Yep.
I will. I don't recall seeing an invitation. That doesn't mean it didn't come.
So as always, we encourage people to, to come, attend, come see what the students were doing.
Oh, the ASVAB.
Oh, yeah.
I remember that. I remember taking that in the library.
I just closed it again, too. I don't know what it is. Okay, so that brings us to, unless anyone has any questions about any of the upcoming events, recommendations from the superintendent?
So we do have a few things. First, Ron will give a financial update and budget, FY24 budget transfers. So a little quicker budget presentation on what's happening this, this year.
Yeah, so for your, your monthly updates, nothing on the Washington end of the finances, a little news from Beacon Hill. I feel like there are bad news tonight, but bad news from Beacon Hill right now, if you haven't read. State collections continue to drag pretty dramatically. And so, you know, DOR is saying tax collections down by just under 7%. That's, that's not typical. January is usually the big month for tax collections. If you're like a nerd like me and follow tax collections, January is the month for tax collections. Anyway, for it to be down that much is concerning, especially on the heels of the governor's 9C cuts. So, you know, you don't have to be a genius to sort of read the tea leaves there and say that the state's probably going to revise some of their FY25 aid projections, is my, my guess. There's no data about that, there's no release of information there. That's just, from my experience, you combine lagging tax collections and 9C cuts, and the state's going to want to be conservative, right? It's sort of there, like us, to try to be conservative with that. So I would anticipate we may see some revisions on legislative side of FY25. Otherwise, you've got your FY24 quarter three warrants, as always, down to the penny. And I have transfers for you. I'll blow those up if you don't mind. I'll get these here. So you've got your budget, as typical, again, rolled up to the penny for all of your accounts. But if you want to go to your transfers. Oh, there they are. A couple of, yeah, a couple of transfers to bring your attention to there. Most of them are just operational. One, though, is just a budget amendment that I'm recommending for the committee. So right now, our expenses for the elementary school are running hotter than typical, but our math, text, and contract services are running, like, the burn rate on those accounts are much cooler. So I'm proposing just a budget amendment within those accounts to transfer some of the math, text funds, and contract service funds over to the supplies for elementary to get them through the rest of the year. And that totals $8,000, sort of both ways there. The only other one, I think, is of consequence, is replacing the AEDs. They need new batteries this year. That's district-wide, so they come up on a uneven cycle. We sync them all together this year, so that now they'll just be on a regular cycle for us. And we want to keep those up to date. And we try to do a month early, just in case. Everything else is pretty straightforward, but I'll answer any questions you have about anything about the budget, anything on transfers, and request the committee approve the transfers.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. I move that we approve the budget transfers as presented this evening.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that brings us to the advertising revolving account. Ron, I'm assuming that's you?
Uh, no, I'm going to take this one, actually. So, as you know, we've established a policy in terms of doing some advertising around the fields.
Yes.
Around the, the district. But those funds need to go into a revolving fund. So the town needs to establish a new revolving account for funds that we would take in through advertising at our fields. In order to create the account, we need to vote basically support of a warrant article that the town has drawn up to go on the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
So as you know, warrant articles, when they appear, will have, the select board voted this much to support it.
Yep.
The school committee voted to support this warrant article. So the, the actual article is in your background. I can bring it up. On the screen. I won't read this too, but in essence, it allows us to establish this revolving account to bring these funds in. It actually has some restrictions on what can be used. So it can't be used for salaries or wages of full-time employees to be paid from this revolving account, those types of restrictions, which I think is pretty consistent with the other part, the other revolving accounts established under this section 1061 and 1062. So this would actually be the warrant article, and it would, I believe it's going to be number six, Article Six, revolving funds. And we're just looking for the committee to support or take a vote on this warrant, say, would you support it?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? If only we could sell $940,000 or $865,000 worth of signs.
Can't be used for salaries or wages of full-time employees.
Yeah. It is, I know, I know, in an ideal world.
$1,000 to $2,000 a year is what you should be targeting for this, you know?
Yeah, is there, you don't need, there's no, there's no cap?
There's a question.
Or is there?
$50,000.
$50,000, okay.
It can be annually, it can be annually rolled. So you save that money up for like a thing the athletics department wants to get.
Sorry, I didn't scroll all the way down, saying that there's, there's a spending limit of $50,000.
$50,000, okay.
Yes, we just need a motion, and the committee's will on whether they want to support this warrant article for the town warrant this year.
Great. I move that the, oop, took it away.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
I could, I think I kind of remember it. I move to support the select board in placing warrant Article Six on the 2024 town meeting warrant as written and presented this evening.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for doing that. Hopefully, we'll see some signage up around our athletic fields. I think it'll be great. Okay, so that brings us to the Reed's Collaborative amended agreement.
This is a little bit of housekeeping. And if you remember, in December, the committee voted to approve the addition of two towns, Brockton and Whitman Hansen, as members of the Reed's Collaborative. At the time, I let you know that two-thirds of the current members, school committees, needed to vote in favor before both districts could be added. So as of January, that's happened. So Reed's has required, has received the required two-thirds vote of the member school committees. So now, they need to actually amend the collaborative agreement itself. So during the January meeting, the board directors, the board directors voted to amend the collaborative agreement, adding both Brockton and Whitman Hansen as members. Process-wise, now each school committee needs to vote in favor of the, the actual agreement, because the agreement's being amended. The collaborative agreement is just that, it's the agreement between the member school committees of how this operates and how the Reed's Collaborative works. So it obviously makes sense that the school committees have to vote to approve that. I put the agreement in the, in your background, but really, it just adds, literally adds the names of the Brockton Public Schools and the Whitman Hansen Public Schools as members of the collaborative. But we do need a vote and a motion to approve the amended collaborative agreement.
Okay. I move to approve the amended Reed's collaborative agreement, adding Brockton and Whitman Hansen as member districts effective July 1st, 2024.
I second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they would like to say?
It's midnight. And as Stephanie said earlier, I'd like to reiterate, please pay attention to what's going on in our town with the budget, with the school. Please come to town meeting, please vote, please come out and vote come April, when positions are up for election or reelection. It's very important that we support our, our students and our learners. I can't stress that enough. And it was really great to see the support here tonight, both from the teachers and the students. So I appreciate that as well. This is obviously a position that we don't want to be in, but we find ourselves here. And as Stephanie said, a lot of other school districts do as well. We're not alone in this. So please, definitely come out and vote, pay attention, pay attention to what's going on. And one other thing I'd like to add, which is kind of a fun thing, best of luck to our three teams from Carver Youth Year that are going to globals in 11 days to compete. Very exciting. And that's it.
Yes, very exciting. Good luck. We've had so many, I think, school records and personal records made. I know during winter track, I know the other teams are doing great. So I encourage people to, to attend the games, the matches, the meets. It means a lot to the kids to see support in the stands, so. Okay, so I'm going to just very quickly say a few things about MASC. I know we have executive session and want to keep things moving. I attended the leadership training this past weekend, where all of the newly elected executive positions for all of the divisions attended, as well as the executive board of MASC. So we could do some team building, get to know each other, talk about what our goals are for the upcoming year. So Division VII has some pretty lofty goals. We're going to have a public speaker. I'm going to start doing a chair chat for this, for Division VII initially on Zoom, just so I can talk to other member districts, you know, share best practices, those types of things. And I wanted to, again, remind everyone that Day on the Hill is May, Monday, May 6th. So I know that's the first day of AP exam, so it's going to be tough for some kids to attend. But now, more than ever, they need to see our faces on Beacon Hill. They need to hear our voices. They need to hear from our students. They need to see how the money that they're voting for, the legislation that they're in support of, how it is affecting our communities and our students. It's so important that they hear student voice. I can say from personal experience that when I'm in front of them with a student, they're taking notes when the students are speaking. They're not necessarily taking notes when I'm speaking, which is perfectly fine, which is why I'm so grateful that we have student advisory running again, and we have such an active student council, and having our students come to speak tonight. Student voice is so important. So please continue to stand up, because what you have to say is valuable, and we're stronger together. So like Kelly had said, please vote if you are able. And with, unless anyone has anything to add, with that, I would welcome a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to public session.
Okay. I move that we adjourn the open session of the Monday, February 12th, 2024 school committee meeting to attend executive session and not to return to open session.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
This has to be a roll call vote, yeah.
Kelly, Nene, aye. Katie Sullivan, aye. Jackie Lake, aye. Colleen Sinuski, aye.
Stephanie, aye. It is 8:46 PM. The public portion of the Carver School Committee has ended. Thank you, everyone.